Templeton Zoning Board of Appeals. Going to hear a variance request made by George and Diane Lamore. 427 Algea Street, Winchamp, to construct a residence at 729 Baldenville Road on a non-conforming lot. All right, you guys know the routine. You went through it a little while ago now. You know what you need?
Is the footprint of the... Hopefully, everybody has what I...
Yeah.
Anyway, is the footprint of the previous building...
On in, Alan, we just started.
The previous building was twenty-six feet wide.
Put the party kids in the back.
And the one I'd like to put in is twenty-seven feet, four inches, which is sixteen inches bigger than what was there. And it meets the setbacks of fifteen in the front, fifteen in the back, plus, so I'm good there. The length of the previous home was seventy-six feet, six inches. And the new home is going to be eighty-six feet. It doesn't have to be eighty-six, but that's what I would like to do. If I put in a small link or breezeway attached to a single car or even a twenty-foot garage. And again, the setbacks are thirty feet, and I still fall within the zoning board is asking for, the thirty feet on its back, left and right. The house will be facing, the front door will be facing Cottage Street. Also, the driveway to the front door, to the garage, would be entering from Cottage Street. That's about my end, that's what I'm trying to do. These are prefab modular homes, and they're nice-looking homes. Do you have colored pictures? This is them right here. But that's the home right here.
Just be reversed, the garage will be on the right.
Yes, I'll be flipping this, the garage will be on the other side. So that's exactly what I'm trying to do.
Yep.
Did you show Mr. Drowan?
That's what it looks like. That's the house right there. I'd like to add maybe a small porch to the front, and then again, the link from the garage.
Where do you, on this here, where you want to put the porch? This is your, this is your side road, it's your front. This is, this would be your front of your house.
It would probably be right there, probably a six-foot front porch.
So you'd be, you'd be even taking that off, so you're still, so you'd be ten foot to the road?
No, I'd probably still be the fifteen, because I've got...
You have to have thirty there.
No, I have to have thirty here.
If you're on a corner lot, on a street, bylaw says you have to have thirty feet frontage, thirty feet back, and thirty feet on the other, on the road, which would be Cottage.
Thirty feet all the way around?
Nope, the fifteen over here is fine. So your front and back are fine, it's just this side here.
Well, it's, this is, it's both, these Cottage Street and Ballinville Road.
Yeah, they have to be thirty feet on both sides.
Really?
So the side setback, where it's a corner lot, so you need a variance for this. And if you're going to put an eight-foot porch in, you'd have to subtract that, and so you say, we'll say ten feet, so you need a twenty-foot variance.
I didn't, that's the first I hear. The building inspector drew, you're right there. The building inspector drew that and told me that's what I would need.
The bylaw does say thirty for both streets on corner lots.
Oh, yeah? Yeah, I get it here. Made a copy of it. Do you know what, just what? Yeah. What? Where that is in the zoning?
Under definition section.
Yeah, I don't know if, they must have discovered that after they, after you had spoke with the building inspector? She highlighted it here for us. Lot corner. A lot with two adjacent sides abutting upon streets or other public spaces. Corner lots shall meet the front yard requirements setback for each way that the parcel fronts. So you need a variance for the, for the frontage on, thirty-foot setback on Cottage, Cottage Street. Is that Cottage Street?
That's Cottage Street.
If I was to move the house back to the fifteen-foot limit, what would that give me up for?
You're at fifteen now.
You're at nineteen-three, and you're going to remember, were you putting the house this way? They don't pull off the foundation. They pull off, they'll, they'll take it from the furthest point out, so in other words, the way your house is going this way, you have your overhang for your roof. You're pulling, really, it starts from that roof line, that way. Not the foundation, a lot of people, and they, and they figured the house that way, and, well, I'm right on the money, but when you turn it, they're not, so you have to, you have to go for the overhang too. Yeah, it's under definitions, section two of the, of the bylaw book. The zoning, section two, definitions, page seventy-two. That's just above where the mobile home, the mobile home bylaw is, well, on at page seventy-three. And the other variance you'd be requiring is to make the lot more non-conforming than the, the previous structure, is that correct? That's the foot... The foot and a half, larger. Was the old footprint fifteen foot off the, the north side of the lot? Was it closer than that?
More closer to twenty.
The old one?
Off, off the back of the...
The old one, yeah.
Yeah, it just doesn't say where the, where the footprint actually, actually was. You had the dimensions of the old building, but you didn't have where, how close?
We didn't have a plot man on file anywhere, there was none ever filed or registered.
But I thought, was the foundation left? Oh, the foundation is gone.
It was made of, it wasn't, it was still stone.
It was granite.
Yes. Top was granite, yeah. That's what I got in my house, stone.
How many of we bought a piece of land from somebody?
Can I just say that when the previous house was there, they built onto the bathroom, and the property line went right through the bathroom?
It does show a jog in the back.
Over the bathroom on, on the north side?
Right.
Yeah.
North, yeah, north. So the property line actually, like, the kitchen was probably about three feet, and then the bathroom jutted out, and the property line went right through it.
So it was on somebody else's property?
Mine.
Did you use their bathroom?
No. No, I passed on that one, thanks. So it was very, very close.
Surveying a chainsaw do just well. How long ago was that built, just out of curiosity, you know?
The bathroom?
I'm just curious, you know.
Because nothing was ever done about it?
Yeah.
No, we moved in there in nineteen-seventy-six, and it was already like that.
Yeah.
And never came up when you, with the bank, with the zoning, I mean, with the...
Taxes.
Usually, when a bank says it's somebody else's property, I know you're biggest.
As far as I know, I mean, we never, it wasn't an issue, we bought it, you know?
Knowing.
It was, well, it was, it was surveyed, and I guess back then, nobody cared, because my bank didn't care.
Yeah, I guess not, they would care now.
Well, sure. And it was very close.
In that state, that's how it was when it, when it burnt?
Yes, my kitchen windows were hot to the touch.
Wow.
It was very close.
And how close to the property line is your, is your home?
I'm not good with figures, I don't know. It's...
How many paces would you say?
It's a, well, the driveway between is a two, for two vehicles, and then there's probably enough for another vehicle after that.
Well, your barn's, your barn's almost right there too, though, right?
Yeah, so... Yeah, I mean, you're a bit, I'm not good at judging that, I'm sorry.
It's a stir plain.
It's, you know. Can I address the board?
Certainly.
Yeah.
As an abutter, I think probably, of all the abutters that you contacted, I was the one that was most affected by the fire and by the, this variance. I was in the process of having, going to have the house painted when the fire occurred, and now a little paint job has turned into a major project, because all the shake shindles were, got hot, and then the water, they all split and cracked. So if there's any blight in the neighborhood, it would be my home, not anything else, because it really needs to be painted. However, that being said, I would much prefer to see a well-maintained home there than the brush that's breeding ticks and the litter that people throw, and, you know, it's, it's terrible to look at, day in and day out. It was bad after the fire, too. But I mean, I know you addressed in the last meeting, I was out of town, I couldn't come, the fact that it's a historical area, which it, you also know it's not. There are houses with vinyl siding, there's subsidized housing with a parking lot, so it's certainly not a historical district. I'm the only holdout, I think, maybe Bob Rose across the street, that doesn't have vinyl siding. I'd like, I would like to see this go through, I think it's good for the neighborhood. They're, they've been residents, homeowners for forty-seven years in Templeton, well-maintained. It's, would add to the tax roll, which the town could use all they can get, and I, I just, I know they would make, put something there that would be appropriate and fitting, and would keep it up. And I just would much prefer to see that than a vacant lot that's overgrown and, you know, just a mess all the time. So, I mean, I hope that, as I said, I'm, I'm the closest to it, I don't have a problem with the home there. We bought the home in seventy-six with another big house there, and I, they just, all they're trying to do is downsize, and I don't think that they should be penalized for that. There would be good tenants, if you will, the property, and I think it would be a good addition to the neighborhood. When we moved in, there were children up and down the street, now there are not. It's an older neighborhood, and it's not like you've got a family going in there or something like that. It's just a couple wanted to put a house on a lot that's a little undersized, and frankly, I don't have a problem with it at all. And I, as I said, I think I'm probably the most affected by it, because I have to look at it every day. So I, I would hope that you would favorably look on this of variance. I, I think it would be a good thing, not a detriment in any way.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
In your package, there is a historical designation for some of the homes in the neighborhood, and towards the back of it.
But there's no, it's not a district, there's no historical districts.
Well, there's the, and then the village district definitions too.
This is the Templeton Historical Commission letter?
Yeah, and then our, our bylaw too, under what a village district is, it mentions something along those lines.
If he had any foot porch here.
If I may, if I may address the board as well, if I could be blunt about it, Hackett's house was not historic, and neither has hers ever been, because I am on a historical society, I looked into getting grants to help her with the signing after the fire, and was told that they were not available, because it is not a recognized historical district. I looked into grants for her, as I said, as a member of the historical society, thinking that because she has a two-hundred-year-old house, maybe I could find some help for her to get the repairs done after the fire. And I was told that there was no grant money available as a historical district, because it is not a recognized historical district. There are some houses that have historical designations, hers is not one, and Hackett certainly was not.
I mean, I live in the Deacon John Baldwin house that Baldenville was named after, but it's not considered historical.
No other questions? Okay.
With respect to the sands, Baldenville is in the National Registry of Historic, there's no question about that. We previously provided the board with that information. My concern is, we're talking about a sixty-six by hundred-and-forty-eight-foot lot, and if we stick to the, the bylaw, thirty-foot setback, front, rear, side to side, there's no way that that building can conform to that.
It's not thirty all the way around.
Well, the only...
If this were a situation where we were asking for a few feet, I would have no problem with that, but sixty-six feet, if you have a twenty-seven-foot wide, twenty-six-foot wide home facing Baldenville Road, with twenty-seven feet and sixty, you're talking about a ninety-seven-foot lot requirement, and it's only sixty-six.
We view that lot every day, we can see it right out all of our windows, and I don't mind empty lot whatsoever.
I just kind of want to add to that, too, that there was a petition given to all of you with eight adjoining homes in the area that all are against this, including the blue house directly on the opposite side of this property, who were against it. So I respect that Donna wants that, but again, there were eight abutters that received those letters that all signed, and you should have them in the packet, saying, "We do not want this property," who built on that way.
Did that include the people on the corner of Cottage?
I couldn't tell you, Donna, there was, there was eight, eight people.
Because I know they're not opposed to it, Bob Rose is not opposed to it, I spoke to the people that are renovating the house on the corner of William Street, they're not opposed to it.
I'm sorry? I said, "If I don't sell it, I'm building on it anyways, I mean, there's, you can't stop me." So, I mean, you might as well give it to some people that really want it.
And what, what's your name?
Jessica Burgess, I own the property.
Okay, you, you weren't here the last meeting, were you? Oh, you were, okay. Okay.
If you can orient that building with respect to the dimensional requirements.
Can I, can I say something on that? They, they have met three sides of that building, the way they have it laid out, the front, the back, and then one side, it's the cottage side.
But you turned it to Cottage Street, so it's no longer seven-twenty-nine Baldenville Road, it would be Cottage Street.
It's always been that way.
But that makes no, there's a front door on the old...
The way the house was built, the front door was...
Hey, hey, one at a time, yeah. Go ahead, Doc. One at a time. Joe, I think you got the floor.
Well, I'll pass it off to them, because they may answer.
The front door on the house that burned down faced Baldenville Road, hence seven-twenty-nine Baldenville Road. Whether they used the side door or not as their front door is completely irrelevant. So by turning the property, that does change, you change the, turn this house facing Cottage Road, it's no longer seven-twenty-nine, is that correct?
There's a lot of homes in town that, on a corner, and they...
One at a time.
There's a lot of houses in town that are on a corner, and it's, and it's named like that, and the front door's on a different street.
I did the numbering.
Yeah.
I did the numbering.
I know when I came here, you, you actually helped me with the addresses, right?
Yes.
The bylaw is you need thirty feet of frontage, setback on both streets, and that's, that's, that's the bylaw. They're requesting a variance from that. Go ahead.
With respect to your comment, I'm a little concerned, because I don't understand, if this is a twenty-seven-foot wide building, if I heard Mr. Lamore correctly, and you're orienting it so it's facing Cottage Street, and it's a sixty-six-foot wide lot, how does that meet the dimensional requirement of thirty feet front and back?
It doesn't meet the setbacks on Cottage Street, but as far as Baldenville Road, which would be the front of the house, there's thirty-one feet there, on the backside of that is thirty-one feet, which meets that.
It's thirty.
Yeah, but it's thirty-one in here, that's what I'm saying, so it meets the setback. And on this, and on the other side would be the backside of Cottage, he needs fifteen feet there, he's got nineteen. So he's got three sides that are all legal.
I, I thought you needed thirty feet.
He just, he's got the front and the back fine, and the side, one side, it's just the Cottage Lane side, he has nineteen point three foot there, so he needs a variance there.
Can you show me that?
Sure, right here, I'd be more than happy, should I, I apologize.
Thirty, thirty is sixty, and the lot is sixty-sixty.
Here's, here's the, here's the house.
The back only has the fifteen.
Here's, here's his Baldenville Road, he's got thirty-one point two-five, which means the front. He's got thirty-one point two-five in the back, that means the side is nineteen point three, he needs fifteen foot there, so he's in there, it's just this side on Cottage Lane, he has nineteen point three, and he's looking for a variance. He doesn't need any, no, just thirty in the front and the back, but he, he wouldn't even need thirty here, if this wasn't a corner lot. Yeah, but he does need it, but I'm saying, if this wasn't a corner lot, he'd only need... He doesn't need, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine, it's just the Cottage Lane side.
I was under the impression that was thirty feet.
On Cottage. No, no, it's thirty feet front and back, setback, that's town bylaws, thirty feet front and back, and fifteen, and fifteen side to side. So if the house is, fronts Baldenville Road, that's, that's their address, that's the front lot. Front and back, it would be thirty feet, and they met it, side to side, fifteen they meet, what they don't meet is, because it's a corner lot, they need to be thirty feet back from both streets. And so that's the variance of their request. No, that's, that's incorrect. I don't know who told you that, but that's incorrect. All right, any other comments from the board? Yeah, I do, if we're gonna finish this up, he, he had mentioned he wants to put an eight-foot porch on the front of Cottage Street. Well, if you, yeah, but if you, if we don't, if we don't put the, if you're not going to put it in, that's fine, but if, if we write it that way, and then you put it in, is what I'm saying.
Didn't want to hold off on it, we're leaving, so we'd like to have, finish it. So this, if, we have to have another, again, come back again?
You don't have to come back again, just a waiting period.
It's actually a lot... Well, if there's something you want that you haven't asked for, you, you, you know, if you don't ask for it now, you, you'll have to come back if it's, you know.
Then I would like to put a six or eight-foot porch.
Well, we, we, I would say then, if, you got to go for the variance anyways, go for the eight, and then you're sure, and the contractor's sure, you know, but that's, that's my, so actually, when you get right down to it, they're going to need a twenty-foot setback on Cottage side. If he's going to build out, he's got nineteen-three, he's talking eight foot off of that, so you're, so he's, he's going to be looking for, that would be a twenty, because you need thirty foot, right? That would knock it down to ten, so you're going to need twenty-foot variance. So you're looking at move it closer than nineteen feet from Cottage Lane? I'm starting with putting it right out here, on Cottage, this is Cottage Street, right here, a little porch, like coming out the stairs and stuff. He's talking eight foot there.
Just make it look fancy or nice.
So that would be encouraging, because we're going to be very...
If we grant this variance, it's very specific.
Nineteen point five feet. That's, that's the drawing you gave us, that's, that's what you've been asking for, is nineteen point five feet off of Cottage Lane.
If we grant you a variance, it'll be listed as nineteen point five feet from Cottage Lane, so there will not be a porch built in the front, if you didn't ask for it, you know, we're not giving, if we give you a variance, it's not, not do whatever you want. It's, it's very specific what you will...
Absolutely, and if you decide not to do it, so be it, you know, but at least if you, if you want to go for it, put it in.
I'd like to have a sidewalk coming up the front of the house and going into the house, maybe a landing or a small porch to get into the house.
So you're talking eight foot?
Outside at, at night.
So you're talking eight, eight feet, no more than eight foot. Yeah, so you're talking twenty foot there.
The girl who lives in what was Cheetah's house, on the corner of Baldenville Road and Cottage Street, her mom, she's, she's just texting Cindy, her mom is not able to be here tonight. But the gist of the text is that she would like to see something go in there, she's not happy with the, the lot, they have a dog that she's had ticks on, that they've never had problems before, whether that's from that, who knows? But it is not more of a brush there. But the gist of the text is that they would be in favor of the home going in there.
And she's not living in the house right now?
No, she's not, but her, but she owns the property.
Okay, anything else? All right, everybody heard enough, any questions? Yeah. Any clarifications?
Got a motion to close the public hearing?
Do I just make one, one more statement?
Sure, yeah.
I am leaving in two days, anything that you can do to speed this along, because I'd like, I got a visit for the lawyer, I got a accountant, I got the bank, in order to push all this paperwork through in the next two days. Otherwise, I got to go to Florida in two days, and then fly back to do whatever I need to do.
Yeah, we won't have the paperwork done in two days.
There's a grace period, right, how many days?
Twenty.
Twenty-one, twenty days, and...
Fourteen days to make a decision, twenty...
It's got to get written up, it's got to... Town clerk's got to stamp it, it's got to get written, typed up, town clerk stamped, and...
Well, I think it's not just them.
And then there's, then there's actually a waiting period, there'll be a waiting period after.
There's the appeal area, too.
The appeal period, twenty days before you record it, before you, before it's official, because anybody can, can challenge it, court challenge, so... Two days, forget two days. You got to wait, if we get you a decision in two days, it, you still got to wait twenty before it's official. So it's, you're talking a month away anyway. You'll be back for Christmas by the time. I'll let that house up in one day. All right, so we got a motion on the floor. I make a motion that we close the meeting. Close public hearing. Public hearing. I'll second that. Seconded by David. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Public hearing closed. Making the decision, and we'll have it written up as soon as we can, and then there'll be a twenty-day appeal period after that. All right?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice, have a nice time in Florida. Catch me in Big Fish, yeah? Yeah, but if you can. Yes. That's gone. Yeah, we, we go all the time, love it. Dorothy asked me to be on the board, and... Dorothy asked me to be on the board, and.
Yes, yeah.
She, she suffered a lot.
Nineteen.
I mean, that's the best one.
Eight-ish maybe?
What, were you five?
Yeah, no.
Just above.
I was on like four or five years before you came on, so.
Yeah, when did you start?
It was two years ago. There's only so much room in this old head, you know?
Yeah, I think, I think it was late eighties.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's.
Been a while.
How many years is it?
Say it was eighty-eight.
I'd be twenty-nine.
Twenty.
Thirty.
Thirty years.
I was born in eighty-seven, I'm gonna be thirty-one in November.
Who's counting, really? Yeah, I was six years old, I guess, when I was.
Well, you know.
Well, she was only two, so.
You're only two, yeah? You have a very nice night, Elaine.
Yeah, you may as well.
Yeah, keep this, yeah, kinda thing.
All right.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm totally reading off the wrong map here, I guess.
Yeah, I got two, too.
Because if they're talking about fifteen feet off of Cottage, and they wanna put an eight-foot up to an eight-foot, I mean, you're down to seven feet, the Cottage Street.
Yeah, where are they gonna park the car?
That's what I was thinking.
No, 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 he, you got that wrong.
I think the garage would be supposed to be.
It's, it's not to the garage.
Oh, I know that.
It's, it's to the front stairs.
Yeah, but you.
Yeah, but he's talking.
So he's gonna need a twenty-foot variance.
Well, yeah, what I'm saying is, he's got fifteen and fifteen front and back here, you know, setback.
Oh, that's, that, I think the building inspector drew that one up for him. And he didn't know it was fifteen, he didn't know it was thirty foot on the other street.
Because one says nineteen-three, another one says.
Has all the setbacks.
Yeah, I got a little confused with these drawings here.
Yeah, that's the one he provided to me, and I was like, what am I looking at?
Yeah.
So I actually had him in the office for a while, and I helped him put together the smaller version of it, which is the one that, this one right here, that has like the nineteen and all that, so that's what he's looking at, he's gonna have nineteen point three feet of frontage.
Do we have that?
He should.
Yeah, is this one?
It was right attached to that one.
This one right here, right?
That house being right there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the one, yeah.
That's the one that he's going on.
That's what, okay. That's his twenty-seven point four.
How are you gonna pull a car in there?
Yeah, that's twenty-seven point four.
But if you look at what he's got, this is what, another weird thing is, so his garage is, it sets back.
I think that's sixty-six, Dave.
It's gotta be sixty-six.
It's sixty-six, not ninety-nine.
But they've got it upside down, yeah.
Yes. How convenient, how convenient.
The front's ninety-nine.
Yeah, how convenient.
Oh, no, okay, so this one's upside down.
He doesn't give you enough information to really make a decision, if you wanna think of it.
That's just.
I work with the guy.
This is, this is just an assessor's map, that's all.
We have no plot plans whatsoever on this piece of property, and.
The thing about it, we gave him a variance originally to go inside of, inside the footprint, right?
Right.
But we don't even know what the footprint is.
No.
So now he wants a variance to go inside and make boundaries, and I'm just thinking it's too much.
Really, you really, you need a surveyor to go in there and give you a block plan, illegal.
What we should've done was give him, give him a variance, I think they shouldn't have a year, they should have more than a year upon the original.
Well, we did that the last time.
Right, we did that, but because they can't come up with where the house is, whose fault is that, that you can't go anywhere you want with it? And, and you can put, you can build something on there. Right. And meet the setbacks. Sure. That's what I'm kinda getting at.
It sounds like it's gonna be better than it was.
Because, because one, one of his, one of his points in the letter is saying that the minimum he could get was twenty-seven four. Yeah. Amos says they'll, they'll build him smaller than that.
Oh, I know they do.
What, Margies?
Yeah.
They'll build, they'll build, they'll make them tiny houses, you got the cash, they got the money, they got the time.
Yeah.
No, no doubt about it. But if you look at the garage, though, I, I'm trying to find it, the way that they have it laid out, the garage sets back a little bit. It's not, doesn't come out to the front of the house, I gotta find it.
I mean, so you sell in Con Creek, and you've done a lot of foundations. A lot of foundations at a lesson, so I don't believe that at all, I just don't think it's true at all. And whether he thinks it's true, he might.
Well, maybe what the builder told him, or the guy who's building the house told him.
Yeah.
You know.
Running a demo.
Or maybe he wants these wider houses. So that, because he says he can't do it, I don't, I don't believe that's to be true. And I really shouldn't be, I, criteria to make a decision for yes anyway.
He could, he could build a twenty-one foot house.
Yes, he could.
A tw- tw- say twenty, he could, he could do a twenty-foot wide house there.
Mm-hmm.
By right.
Yeah.
And we could give him a variance to do a twenty-four, to give him a little bit of room, but I think twenty-eight's too much.
And then, and then now he wants the eight-foot.
Yeah, eight-foot porch in the front.
So he's getting twenty, you need a twenty-foot variance.
Talking about that much in the front and that much in the back.
But he's not asking for that on his variance, he's asking for twenty-eight.
But you know what's kinda weird, though, and, and it does, I know it's on the street, but theoretically, if it was a regular lot, he'd only need fifteen feet, he'd be definitely within that, you know, but.
Being a corner lot, I think the criteria is just different, that's all. I'm sitting, you know. But, there, that was a house there, that was existing, that was a house there. We just don't know where the house was.
Well, the way she made it sound.
I'm going through this in Gardner right now in a lot, by the way. I've been going through this, we had to hire a surveyor. Put all the paperwork together and find out where the house was, to the best of his ability, and the town approved it that way.
Yeah.
Here, it's like, oh, well, you know, we're just, yeah.
I can't believe even in, even in seventy-six, they let, well, she moved in in seventy-six.
We had to prove it, we had to prove.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm doing it right now, I had to go through all that crap. To come in, to be able to put a house on a lot that was demoed, that had, you know, two years into it, in Gardner. And it's within two years, we're trying to pull the permit right now, and they made us go through, we had to hire Zoc. Zoc said, there's nothing to really go by, same kinda thing as this, trying to find documents, and he did the best he could to kind of sketch it out, however he got his information, he got it, cost a few thousand dollars, and now we can build the house on it, because they accepted that.
Did they do? Did, did, did they buy this lot yet?
No.
So when they buy the lot, some lawyer is gonna do a deed search on it, and some, someplace back in history, it's gonna say, yeah, three stones from this corner post, no, they will, you know, because I've gone through, I've gone through that.
It'll, it'll show the boundaries of the lot.
It'll show the boundaries of the lot.
But it won't show where the, the original home sat.
And moved Cottage Street, and they took that sidewalk, and two sidewalks.
Back when it was a horse drawing through there, it was a narrower street, and everything else.
A wooden walkway in front, back then.
Right.
So with, with sixty-six foot lot, with thirty, even thirty-foot setback from Cottage Lane, fifteen-foot setback from Dona Sands, it leaves you twenty-one feet.
Yep.
And. I would rather see that than the porch.
Make a, a non-conforming lot, more non-conforming.
More non-conforming, in the porch being six feet, eight feet.
Up to eight feet.
Eight feet from the, from the boundary. They're from the street, eight feet from the street.
Someone slips on ice back porch, it's toast.
Yeah, that, that's just, I think it's not gonna improve the neighborhood.
And we don't have.
All the people have a, have a right to complain, why Dona Sands is so for this, I don't understand.
And we don't have a good plan of what he wants, so if we give him an eight-foot variance, he can build a whole house eight feet.
Yeah.
You know, we, we don't have a criteria of, okay.
You don't have a driveway.
He doesn't have an accurate set of plans for us.
What part of the lot?
But could we, uh, could we write it up that, say, okay, the nineteen-three, we'll, we'll leave it at that, but could we write it up, there'll be an eight-foot variance just for a porch? Only, not, the house has to stay in that footprint?
Where would, you could put the porch anywhere, you know, you.
Would have to say entryway, I would think, something like that.
You know, he can come back in for a porch variance if he wants, is the way I kinda look at it, I mean, we're doing a lot for the guy, as far as him not coming up with anything concrete and inaccurate to what he wants.
Why didn't he approach a planning board before this, because he knew he was out of, out of code?
Well, it's not the planning board.
Building inspector sends him to us first.
All right, yeah. What other, he needs a trailer permit.
Yeah.
That's, that's what he needs, that's, after he's, after he's done with us, if we grant this.
Well, no, this one that he put in is a modular, so he'll skip the selectmen, they won't even have to look at it.
Oh, this is modular, this is gonna have a foundation?
Yeah, this is a modular, yeah.
Nice looking house.
Okay.
Is he gonna put in a foundation?
He asked you with this model, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, so this.
We're not given permission for manufactured homes, anyway.
No, no, we can't, that's not a.
No.
So really, if you, to pass this, we'd have to, the lot size, and then, the, the frontage.
Excuse me, but based on our variance that we gave him, if we said, okay, you can build in your footprint, right? Who's to be the police to make sure he builds in the footprint, would that be the building inspector?
How can you prove it wasn't?
Well, we said you can build in the footprint, then they're gonna say.
That's right, we don't know where the footprint is, though.
How could they say it wasn't?
Because that's who shot me down in Gardner, was the building inspector, yeah, you can build in the footprints, okay, I don't need, I don't even need to come in here.
Well, Rich could've said that.
Right.
Rich could've said that if a year hadn't lapsed.
Right.
Because he lapsed that year, he had to come here to ask for that special extension, that's why he started here the first time.
So these are the goals of the building inspector, the building inspector say, yes, you can build within the footprint, here's your variance, okay, great.
Yeah.
Well, where's the footprint?
Right.
Then it's up to him to.
Prove it.
He's his own board of force.
Right, or, or meet the setback.
Right, or meet the setback.
Or, yeah, all the setbacks, all around.
Yeah, he meets the setbacks, then you can't complain about it, because we gave him the variance.
Wouldn't he have still had to come here, though, because of the lot size? Because it's a one acre.
Grandfathered.
I'm just wondering if police is that part of it, I, I assume the building inspector.
Yeah, twenty-seven like seven.
Police is where the location is, so we don't know where the house goes. Yes, you can build within the footprint, now he's asking for, we're not building within the footprint, we're making it bigger. So now that kinda throws all that out.
Yeah, he, he's making it bigger than the existing home.
Square footage also, or just length and dimensions?
Because that's what he, I wrote that down.
Because this had a garage on it, too.
Yeah.
The original house was seventy-six point six long, I think that was with the barn.
Right.
And twenty-six feet wide. And he, and he's asking for twenty-seven point six.
Right.
Plus this.
Ten feet more longer.
Plus this porch.
Plus the porch, plus ten feet longer.
And, and ten feet longer, but that's not, well, yeah, I think it's just too much, too much, too much, that's my opinion. I, I, I'd like to see the, the lot built on myself, but.
Yeah.
But.
This, this just doesn't fit to me.
Well, you're real dirty pounds proud of your neighbors, you know?
Yeah.
See, this is a.
I, I, I just don't think.
You're gonna look like the.
This is the right.
It's.
Lot.
For the house.
Yeah.
From there.
I mean, is he dead set on this size house, can he come back, I mean, he could come back with a house that would fit on this.
Right.
Well, come up with one that was close to it.
Or a smaller.
We, we could help the owner of the lot, and, and maybe George and Diane, by granting a variance from the thirty-foot setback on Cottage to fifteen. Make it like, and you, so if you meet the fifteen, fifteen.
Thirty in the front.
Thirty, thirty, front, back.
Yeah, then you're good.
And you, you keep it in that, you keep whatever you want in that footprint.
That's being generous on our part.
You got the blessings from this board. And then, if George and Diane don't wanna build that, well, they can go find something else.
I, I, I don't mean to be rude, but the woman who owned the lot, she says, well, they don't care, I'm gonna build something. What do you mean, you're gonna build something, you just, you know, you're not just gonna build something, you're gonna have to get.
Yeah, so that would, that, that would help her. I think that might help the situation, George might say, okay, yeah, because, like, twenty-seven point, twenty-seven point six foot wide house, that's, I mean, most houses twenty-four, twenty-six feet.
Yeah, that's, it's not very wide.
That's, yeah, really squeeze that. That's, that's not a.
Yeah, but is, is, if we grant him those setbacks, and say, build within those parameters, is he gonna then come back and say, okay, I wanna put an eight-foot porch on the front now, too?
He has to come back for that.
As you're writing in, what you can put in, this is what you can put in to meet the setbacks.
He could always come back for another variance.
For a variance for the porch.
Sure, he has the right.
Oh, yeah, he's got the right.
Yeah.
Well, I think there, you can't be redundant, like, he asked for something.
Well, if he gets denied, he has two years or something like that before he can ask again.
Yeah, yeah.
He's, he can come every two years if he wants, I guess, we, you know, if we were to say.
Is it two years?
I think it's two, I believe, I think it happened to me. Unless.
Well, then it must be true.
Geez, could we find that hard to believe?
Unless there's substantial change.
You've been here that long?
You can't ask for the same thing over and over and over.
Yeah.
You, you gotta wait two years, or you have substantial change in what you're asking for.
And that, that kinda spells things out, because I don't see how the building inspector's gonna enforce, and how the person's gonna prove where the old house was, based on our last variance we gave him. If you say that, then we know one thing, we know that they're gonna be so, it's gonna follow a certain criteria, fifteen, thirty, thirty, which is kinda common to everybody.
Yeah.
And, and that way, they know where they can put it, and like you said, it helps out the people, if they don't sell it to them, they'll sell it to somebody else, in this market.
I, I, to me, on a, on a lot of this small, to me, you gotta at least hold those setbacks, and maybe it's gonna keep the neighbors happy. You know, and.
I think it's for the well-being of the neighborhood, don't you think?
Yeah, but the, the, the thing is, it's, as far as the neighbors go, they, they've met all them setbacks. The back, thirty feet.
Yeah.
Side, fifteen on the other side, so really, they're just talking road, and it's just the one road, so really, it's, neighbors can't be pissed off they're putting it right where it should be.
Small dead-end road, too.
That's what I mean, if it's put where it should be, you know, I mean, when I looked at the picture of the house, yeah, okay, it's not a two-hundred-year-old house, but it doesn't look bad, no.
If you guys did grant him that variance, he would already be in compliance with this, right, if he had nineteen side and thirty front and rear, he could still place without the porch?
Yeah.
We just gotta vary that Cottage Street.
Yeah.
So he could still put this down if he gave him the variance?
I would say so, without the porch.
Without the porch.
As long as we knocked the one side back down to fifteen foot.
Yeah, but if we lifted the variance needed on Baldenville Road.
Well, it also, the way, the way that, the way John put it is very clear, thirty, thirty, right?
Fifteen, fifteen.
It's very clear.
So, yeah, so he meets the thirty front Baldenville.
And they might not like it, but it means.
No matter where their front door is, they're still gonna keep that Baldenville address.
What's one thing you're giving them is, you give them the fifteen feet on Cottage, is what you're giving them.
That would be the, yeah, the variance to be the fifteen feet.
And you could make that twenty.
I mean, that's technically on Baldenville would satisfy a front, front yard is yard extending the full width of the lot, situated between the street line and the nearest point of the building. So it would meet the definition of a front.
Yeah, he.
Doesn't say that the door needs to be there, to be a front yard.
Right.
Yeah, the fifteen, 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 thirty, thirty, you would be able to put the twenty-seven foot.
Without.
Without the porch.
Without the porch.
Right.
And the other thing about spelling it out is, if he's off by three inches or something, hey, it was clear.
Right.
And say, well, you know, you said this.
Yeah, and fifteen, fifteen is thirty, twenty-seven, six, that's fifty-seven and a half, and he's got six, so that's giving him nine feet, eight and a half feet to play with.
Yeah, I can move that out. Work on a lot less.
Yeah, that, that gives you, that gives you, yeah, that's fine, that's, that's what I'm saying, he can, yeah, well, he's just gonna make sure the overhang.
Yeah.
Because the house is running.
Bump out eight feet?
So it's running sideways, so there isn't overhang.
Yeah, you can see.
Yeah, so you, you, you got overhang.
Yeah, well, I guess the biggest thing we're giving him is a thirty feet down to fifteen on Cottage.
Yeah.
I don't see a problem with that.
Which I think is.
No.
Pretty reasonable, very reasonable on the board.
Yeah, my gut feeling was not.
Yeah, my gut feeling was not.
I mean, I was asking for too much.
When he started throwing a porch.
It was also very, yeah.
Yeah, what the hell, yeah.
And he may still be, you know.
He can later, nothing we can do about that, I'd make a motion, we accepted the variance leveled out the way you said, thirty thirty fifteen, with the fifteen foot change for the.
Yeah. Footprint.
Cottage street.
Even thirty thirty.
Baldenville Road being the front thirty?
Yeah.
Is that Hackett, that's the back neighbor?
That was Hackett, Sands now.
Oh, Sands now, so who's the one in the back there, cause that would be the thirty also, the next, next neighbor?
The next neighbor across the street?
No, the next neighbor on the back of the boundary.
It'd be thirty fifty.
Baldenville's the front, who's the back?
Banks.
Banks?
They weren't here today.
No.
They got a letter.
Um, or say in the front boundary being Baldenville Road and the back boundary, you could say it that way. It has to be thirty foot setbacks with the side boundaries being cottage street and the other side being Sands.
Sands, yeah.
Being fifteen, whichever way you write it up, I'm just saying, that's what, that's what we're clearly talking about.
We're only giving him a variance for one road, cause everything else meets, so.
The, yeah.
That's what we're doing.
The building envelope.
And that was within that, the original house was within that anyway.
Pretty close.
You had to have assumed that was within thirty feet on that original house.
Yeah.
Well, you know where the footprint was?
No.
Well, well, he claims it's.
That's just it, we're assuming.
This building's a little bit, a little bit bigger than the existing, than the previous, the proposed building is ten feet longer and foot and a half wider.
Bigger. Bigger. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, twenty six versus twenty seven point six, so it's a foot and a half bigger.
Seventy six instead of.
So the bar should be any question.
We have no criteria to go on on the original.
What proof does we have of the size of the old building?
That's what I'm saying.
The foundation is still there.
I don't, I don't, yeah, but I don't see what it matters.
We can still see, but.
Google Earth.
I don't really see what.
Yeah, we can, I can get up, give it up on Google Earth.
Google Earth, and then you, is.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Eighty eight or something like that, what if they don't have eighty?
Absolutely.
And then you can, if you Google Earth Pro.
Probably there before the fire now.
Figure, yeah, figure out exactly.
That we should do that.
Yeah, well, this must have been the.
They had a car park.
There was a lot in the back there.
They had room for cars.
Yeah, the garage is smaller than the house, it's set back a little bit, I remember, cause he used to have a tractor. For a tractor trailer parked out front all the time, then they had a Jeep there that was all tonne parked for a year.
Yeah, but you, look at this one, John. That was on the proposed, that was the original.
Oh, that's the original here?
Yeah, this is proposed.
Right, the proposed is set back, John, the garage a little, just a little bit, but even if it isn't, it doesn't really matter, cause you're gonna have to give them the fifteen feet anyways.
And plus the driveway, or that piece of land is just straight down, it's not like.
In fifteen feet.
So what's, what's he, with the dr-?
Yeah, I think that's like a stone wall on one side.
That's a problem.
So what's he gonna do on the Baldenville Road side of that property where it slopes off like that?
Drops right on.
Yeah, is he planning on like building that up with a wall or something?
He's gonna have to put a foundation and maybe we'll see it sticking out of the ground.
Yeah. Yeah, they'll be, yeah, that, it'll be thirty feet away.
Yeah, but that drops off pretty good though.
On Baldenville Road would be thirty.
Yeah.
And it's, yeah, it's pretty steep there.
Still pretty close to cottage street, cottage lane too, cottage street.
Which also is a little bit of a hill.
Yeah, if, if.
The corner is better.
If he's having a garage coming in off of cottage street, if we grant him the variance for fifteen feet, that's not long enough, you can't get a car in your driveway.
You can't park a car in driveway, unless you have a real short car, smart car.
Yeah.
No limit is.
So that's not really ideal.
School buses go there too.
Yep.
I think we ought to make it.
Isn't there a sidewalk up through there?
Yeah.
Yes.
So the car would be sticking out into the sidewalk, the sidewalk's on that side?
Yeah, the fire hydrant's right there, I know they're cleaning it, there's, there's a wall there too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, that's, that's a really good point, what we're doing is we're causing kids to walk up to the street.
And that's, and that's why.
Where all these parents drive, I tell you, I'm one of them, pick up the kids, there's a line of them that go down cottage street.
Yeah.
And start to bring the kids in and all that, now you're forcing kids to walk off the sidewalk down to somebody's, I parked in my driveway.
Yeah.
Well, I guess the ZVA shouldn't have gave you permission.
Yeah.
Who's on the ZVA? John Fletcher.
No, the, the, the prop, the fifteen feet would be just starting from the sidewalk in. I don't believe we're gonna give him a, to the curb variance.
No, right.
Right?
And that's his lot sixty six feet, so he owns that.
So he's getting no business parking on the sidewalk, that's still sidewalk going by his driveway.
Sidewalk isn't in.
If he's parking in the sidewalk.
Okay.
So you, we're not pulling off the street then, you're pulling off the, the beginning of the sidewalk.
Fifteen feet from the.
It should be from the sidewalk to the, to the, his lot.
Not to the road, so.
But if he's parking in the sidewalk, the kids are gonna walk off.
He can't park in the sidewalk, is what I'm getting at.
But if he.
That's illegal.
But if you don't give him enough room to park, what's he gonna do?
But if you only have fifteen feet from the side, from the edge of the sidewalk.
I can't visit him, my truck's twenty two feet long.
No, we don't want Ford's there anyway.
You don't want something that runs.
Uh-oh.
You have to take one of your other vehicles, one of your other many vehicles, that three wheeled thing you got.
That's right, that'll just about do it.
So it would be, we would have to put a smaller, a larger setback for the garage.
For the garage, that's what you have to say, garage has to be.
The home can sit fifteen feet.
From town boundary?
From the town boundary.
I'd say the garage has to be like twenty feet up the.
Home is fifteen, but the, but the garage has to be twenty?
Well, how about this, let's link out of the box here, why, why can't we push it back closer to Sands, she's most in favor of this going through?
Give her ten feet.
Give her whatever, well, whatever, I mean, if, if they're happy with fifteen here, push, take it from the other side, move it back, then it gives them.
And, and we know, and we know.
Nobody does anything behind their house anyway, especially when you've only got ten feet back there.
And we know the original footprint, you know, here's a picture of it.
She's gaining either way.
The, the original footprint was set up that way.
Yeah, she's gaining.
By this picture.
Sands is gaining actually room there, which she doesn't seem to care.
Yeah. Yeah, and you, you look at the picture here, that's her barn.
Yeah, oh, I know, I know, it's old to us, yeah, yeah.
And that's what they have the right to do is what was there, so we shouldn't let them crowd it. We shouldn't let them crowd it.
Should be crowded cottage street.
Cottage street, especially, you know, the, the reason the frontage, the setback from the frontage is thirty feet is not fifteen, is cause of the driveway and.
Why didn't we bring this up before?
They didn't give us a plot plan.
He's supposed to.
Thought of this now.
He's, he's supposed to do that, not us.
Yeah.
Ten feet in the back, that gives them all they need on all, all of them but the ten, so we're not messing with the road, the kids in school. Win win for everybody, I don't see Sands sitting here telling us that it used to be on her land.
That's what she told us.
We're giving you ten feet.
And, and that was testimony, she said, you know, we're trying to figure out where the footprint was of the old house, she said, the old house is on my land.
Why don't we give them permission to put it on her land?
But the way they get the, John, the way they get this proposed, I don't know if it is, you can't really tell, but, but they got the garage that sets back a little bit here.
John, I saw that, but that, this is the really what the house looks like.
Yeah, I, I, that's what I would think, it's not much of a safe, it's anything, it's only a foot or two.
This is the bathroom she's talking about, they add on.
Yeah, that little bump out right there, yeah, and, but the garage was real close too.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only time a foot maybe further back, but what about if they didn't put the breezeway in too? Set that back.
Well, that way doesn't matter. They're, they're meeting thirty thirty.
Okay.
They're meeting thirty thirty that way.
Isn't that the original?
So the length isn't a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, it's like you say, three sides are perfectly legal, just that one corner.
Ten feet in the back ought to be an acceptable amount, in my book.
The old.
Where we got a nonconforming lot, ten feet in the bay, if we pushed it back towards Sands.
Fourteen.
And varied that instead of the cottage street.
I mean, you lost me here. Push it.
Push the house back, make the variance.
From Baldenville Road?
Ten feet, no, towards Sands, the neighbor.
I don't know who Sands is where they live.
The only neighbor, the only one in the back.
Okay, the one in the back.
The lady that was here, that's the.
On Baldenville Road.
On Baldenville Road.
Okay, on Baldenville Road, thank you, I thought it was the one behind you on cottage. Okay.
So that way it's off of cottage street.
So you're, you're, plenty of room in the front, Baldenville Road and Cottage Road, Cottage Street.
Well, you can shove it towards Sands four feet anyways, because you got a fifteen foot, you could take there nineteen.
But I'm saying, if you gave, gave him all the way up to a ten, ten feet.
With the garage only?
It only needed fifteen anyway, right, the back?
Six, six, that's what he said.
The, uh, no, cottage tree needed, without the porch, it needed eleven feet.
Thirty front, thirty back.
Without the, the rear, I mean, the side should be back there.
That's what he said, the old house is seventy six six.
Yeah, it'll be the side, but.
So you'd only get five feet extra if you went to ten.
But that's meaning setbacks.
But it was nineteen.
Yeah.
Nineteen, so you're talking getting, gaining ten feet. I think that's a better situation than anything. And you don't have to have them change building size. Then you probably even fit the eight foot porch on there if they're down the road they wanted to. I don't know if I'd entertain that also right now.
You think leave a ten foot?
So if you went, if you went ten in the back, yeah, then you'd, yeah.
That'd give you plenty in the front.
Be almost thirty up in the front.
Yeah, and you're not affecting anybody that, he's happy. Sands is happy, I'd say, I didn't hear any, any negativity out of her at all, she wants that thing in there. She can see it better.
Closer.
Wait till she goes to sell that historic home and the expert says, I don't want anybody ten feet away from me. That's down the road though.
Yeah, so she wants, he wants to push it till it take nine feet, give the variance over here, so that'll be ten, that'll be just about thirty. That would work. But it would have to be written up, that it's gotta be moved. Ten.
Christ, twenty four foot, why, it's wider than that house.
You'll get pissed off, how much between here?
That's only twenty eight point six feet.
Sands house, how much, how much, uh?
Off cottage, off of cottage.
From house to sideline.
Right.
I don't know.
But that's a hell of a lot better than.
I think it's quite a bit.
Fifteen.
We could.
But it gives, if you wanna drop it to eight.
His property line.
Yeah.
Sands.
How far is the house away from?
I think, I think they should drop the house.
Okay, that's alright, I wouldn't care about.
The only fact that we have.
So they got ten acres and it used to be on my land.
Yeah.
Other than that, I don't think you have any facts really.
Well, they gotta go between, they gotta go to the building stuff.
You know, he's asked, when you, when you, your house burned and you replace it, if the, the old house went like this, you've got the right to do that, you don't have the right to do this. You know, if it's, if it's within encroaching on the setbacks, you don't have the right to do this, you have the right to do exactly.
Your original footprint was.
Original was, we ran into it over here with, with Reno's.
Right.
Not Reno, next to Reno.
Yeah.
I think there should be some consistency to it to the board.
I'm surprised they haven't torn that building down yet.
Yeah.
Hasn't had, gone through the planning board yet.
Oh, they gotta, they gotta go to the planning board now.
Yeah, cause that's when you're gonna get yourself in on a pickle.
You know, pisses it off.
We couldn't, you grant the variance.
Try to get it through kinda fast and get the business up.
And, and he'll have to change his, his, his house. He could meet the thirty foot frontage.
Yes.
Setback, or setback on cottage and, and Baldenville Road.
Which I think are the two most important setbacks.
Yes, and then go ten feet from Sands.
Which is the one who wants it.
And he cut his house back to twenty six, put a twenty six foot ranch, that's, I mean, that's a standard ranch.
Which I know he can do. Yeah, that's a standard.
Can't go any smaller than twenty seven, that's.
Twenty four is actually very common.
Yeah.
Twenty six is that, twenty six is what they're doing nowadays.
Right.
Twenty eight is even deeper, twenty six is.
Twenty four.
Yeah, cause if they're building trusses, don't they go like, twenty six is kind of a standard trust?
Yeah, twenty four, twenty six, twenty eight.
The, in the former house that sat there.
Right now they're doing a lot of twenty six foot deep houses.
The former house is twenty one.
And it fit the state of going up and had the land in the front.
So the former house is like twenty six.
Yeah.
And then with that after bump up.
Yeah, yeah.
And you have to, so you just go fourteen feet front.
With that front porch. So, so what you're talking about is moving it, which makes sense, so you actually have to.
Yeah.
Make your living room bigger, all that.
Mm-hmm.
The lot size, not the former lot, and you're gonna have to go for two sides, as far as variance for two sides. As far as the ten foot, you wanna cut that down to ten, so you need a variance there, and you're gonna need a variance on the front side. On cottage lane.
No, if, if we cut this, this.
If you take ten off of that, well, you can't even take, you only take nine three off of that, unless you give them a little bit more.
Well, if you, if you make this, this is Sands.
Yeah.
If you make this setback, if we give them a variance for a ten foot setback instead of a fifteen foot setback.
Yeah.
Over here.
Yeah.
They make it weird sizes a lot times.
Yeah.
We need managers that have weird dimensions.
He could put a twenty six foot house and leave thirty feet here, thirty feet here and thirty feet there.
That would work, that would work for me, I, I, I agree with that, because then you got, like you say, you got the, the room on cottage, you're not crowding the sidewalk, you can put your cars in.
You can park a car without.
Absolutely.
Kicking in the sidewalk in front of the garage doors.
Absolutely.
You, and it, and it's pretty much in line with what.
Was already there.
I think it's better than what was already there, cause that, she said that was on her property line and, and it's all, that bathroom was only four feet. That bump out was only four feet, so that, that means that house, that's how that house sat. If that bathroom was on her line, say it was on her line, not even on her land, say it was on the line.
From that house, really?
That was only a four foot, that was only a four foot.
Oh my god.
At the time, so that means it was over thirty feet over here, all, for the past hundred years. Yeah, but, you know, but by law, thirty feet's enough, so, so I think that's the way to go.
Okay, then let me ask you, if, if that's the case, and it was on the lawn.
Yeah.
And it was a footprint, and it burned down and it built in the right time, could they build that?
I mean, the way she said it.
Back half of that bathroom right back on, even though it's over the lawn.
Wow.
See, now theirs were, that's, that's a sticky area.
Yeah, well, I think so, because that's, that, actually, they would have to deed that length over to.
Would be, well, would be, it would be.
If it's been there for thirty years or whatever.
Yeah, I would think so.
Well, seven years or what's, what's, not imminent, no, adverse possession. Eight years? Eight years?
Eight.
Yeah, I, I think, if it didn't burn, I think they'd have the right to put it back there. I think.
Interesting. So you can't, you can't burn your neighbors' own.
So, does that, that seem reasonable to everybody?
I like it.
I think so.
Ten foot.
That works.
Ten foot on Donna's.
And it gives.
Thirty, thirty, meet the thirty setback.
Thirty thirty and fifteen.
I like the idea of.
A lot of kids walked that road.
Yeah.
And a bus stop right there.
Yeah, there's no doubt about it.
Car in front of your garage door.
And I think looks wise and all that, I think Donna's, in her, that particular case, they have that garage, she's a waste, a house is a waste.
Yeah, and, and that's how it's been for a hundred years.
I don't think Donna would have a problem with a baking house, it was Kevin, Norman's house, the white one there, baking.
She's the one that's.
That little trailer.
He sells coal.
Yeah.
Yes, he set the thing in the back, yeah.
I think you are.
He, uh, his house looks alright, you know, I mean, that's part of the village.
The boy. The king of the appeals court.
I'm excited you got to use the gavel tonight, I'm not gonna lie.
I know, I was pretty good with the gavel.
Forty years, I've never seen anyone use it.
I'm thirty years old, and I've been on the board for twenty nine years.
Amazing how that works.
Is that the stain right there from your binky? I might have been, huh?
Right, you might have been. Couldn't take more than four people talking at the same time.
Nah, I don't blame you.
Alright.
Such a small crowd to get out of hand though, gabble them?
They were fighting out in the parking lot after they left you.
Really?
They were.
That's what it costs for them to break it up.
Alright. I'd say we go for that, huh? That, that works good, John.
Tire slashed and keyed and everything else out there. Alright, so how we wanna write this up? Variance for the deck.
Ten feet.
Minimum. Ten foot setback.
We consider that a side setback, right?
Well, side, the way the house is facing is really a rear, so I'm just gonna give a variance for a minimum of a ten foot setback.
North side of property?
To the north.
Sands here, butler. Sands property.
North.
To Sands.
Side.
Which is currently Sands property, cause they, they might sell it or whatever.
Yeah.
I'll just put the address.
Okay, they.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
They're pretty smart like that.
It's why they pay me the big bucks.
Yeah.
Keep on correcting us.
Variance of minimum of ten foot setback for the north side of the property.
Facing Sands.
Along Sands's.
Long Sands, oh, that's the beach over there.
Alright, and then meet all other setbacks. Thirty from cottage, thirty from Baldenville Road, and thirty from.
School Street?
Well, whoever that a butter is.
Property is a butter.
The east, the east side.
Set the east, you gotta find the advantage.
You would have thought, he would have thought.
Banks.
Yeah, you would have thought.
You would have thought he would have come in wanting to do that, instead of a.
I figured the second time around, he was gonna have more of a defined plan, but.
Nah, he's. The best part was the two days, that was good, that was real good.
Back if he was.
I want this in two days.
And I, I don't think I've ever heard that for quite a while.
Yeah.
It would have been an easy one to say.
I want to answer yes, and I want it to be.
It really would have.
Yeah.
If I didn't think he'd ever come back, I would have said no.
He'll be back.
He'll be back.
He wants his porch.
Well, he can, he can put his porch on if it meets the thirty foot setback. Wants his.[1449.82]